For the work session, we're a few minutes late getting started. We're getting all our technical items, the reins there and set up, but we got pretty much a full schedule for the work session, so we'll get started with that. And I guess that means the maintenance department update. Don't be bashful.
Just a little update for those who don't know, we, the beginning of this year, probably about early spring, Mr. Dr. Barnett came to us and said, "We want to do, we want to buy program for the maintenance department." We'd looked at programs many times, over since 1998 when I came in the maintenance department, we had looked at several different programs and got information, but it best as far as ever went, we never got to go any further with it. So, we were excited when he approached us, "Hey, I want to do this, let's get on board with something." So, Skidoo was one we had already was very familiar with, that other systems used, and that's the one he had familiarized himself with, that other systems were using. So, over the course of the summer, Ricky and I done training and tried to get everything set up. We purchased software and tried to get everything set up, ready to go. With the help of technology, we bought iPads for our guys in the maintenance department, because it would be totally computerized. That's how we decided to go with it. If they could send a text message on the phone, they could learn how to use the program, was kind of the approach that we took. So, it's been very interesting, and I guess it's been a bigger learning curve for our guys, not working with other than their phone and technology every day. But, I think it's all came well, and the peers at the principals and schools have executed it very well, and so it's going good. We're, it's a lot easier on us. They, at school level, they put their work orders in, and they pass them to us through the computer, and then Ricky assigns those out to our guys, and they just turn on their iPads every morning, and they know where they're going, pretty much. It's just we have something that comes up during the day, that we, those plans have to change, but it's worked very well. To date, you can see on the, one of the, the first sheet I had in your folder, is up to date, we have 686 work orders complete. Now, that's what's gone through the system. We always have those, that when one of our guys after school, "Hey, can you fix this?" You know? "Hey, can you..." you know, and we, we have it came up with a solution to that problem over the years, and so it's just, it's just one of those things I think we have to pretty much deal with. But, for the ones who has, what's came through the computer system, through the Skidoo has, we completed 686 work orders to date. Now, you can see on there, it tells you right at the top, the very first number, right at the top, the 28, that's new requests, that's ones that's out there that hasn't been assigned yet. And then we have 31 in work in progress, that's the ones that have been assigned out that's waiting to be completed. And it makes it easy, because the principals can go back and look, and this was one of the problems we always had, is if our guys had to order a part, couldn't fix it that day, and had to order a part, not always would we let the principal know. And then it would have duplicate work orders sent in. Well, now, they can put in the system that they, the parts are ordered. And when the principal looks back at their work order that they've submitted, they will see that, so they can, they can see where the status of that work order is. So, it just makes it a lot easier on everybody, and I also print it off, each one of your schools, so you can kind of get an idea of what's been going on there in maintenance, and so.
We felt like this was a good decision. How did the maintenance people out in the field, how do they, how do they like it?
Now, I think it's good. It was a big learning curve, because we had to, you know, they had, we had to get iPads, we had to set them up for Apple ID, along with technology helped us do this, then we had to, they had to, they already had an email account, but they didn't utilize it, so they had to start utilizing their email account, so it just took some time to get them. But, and we had a few little bumps in the road that we had to go back and.
When did you say we started on this, on Skidoo?
I'm sorry, when?
When?
Oh, this is the first. Well, yeah, today's school started, because today we started. We had it up and running to go on itself.
Yeah, I think it's set up, because I haven't had very as many files about that kind of thing. Maybe it's just very few of our clients at this time, so I think it's good.
Yeah, and you know, and it's, I think it solved a lot of problems for us, because it was like, well, we sent this in two weeks ago. Well, now, we can go back, you know, you can go back and see without, you know, we said, well, we didn't get it, because we were faxing everything in. And so, it was, so it's just a lot better chain of keep it up, keep it up with it.
Yeah, because that was one thing that I always, was always a problem, is you have somebody say, "Well, I asked for this so many, so long ago, I don't know that you did that."
Or, "I reported three times," you know?
Yeah, so this is a good, definitely.
It's a good trail with this.
Yes, and we still have a few that wants to call.
Yeah.
And we have tried, we've just said, you know, "You need to put this in." You know, we tried to discourage it, tried not to take any, you know, over the phone, unless it was emergency.
Who's authorized to do the, to do the work orders?
Myself and Ricky both are, we can go in and look at what's out there, and Dr. Barnett.
But, is it, is it the principal? I mean, is it who it's.
The school, okay. The principals, that's who is assigned. Now, we, we have a capability, and it's set up, that teachers can actually put in their own work orders, and then it would go to the principal.
The principal approve.
And then he.
Y'all can look at it.
Yes.
That's a bright idea.
He, they can look at it and send it on to us, you know, approve it or not approve it. I'm not sure any schools are you letting teachers put theirs in. And we are getting some, if you see on there, we have a few that's being denied. That's mainly stuff that feels like that the custodian needs to do. And we don't, because it's kind of one of those things where, you know, they want to put everything in, and sometimes something slips through that, makes the custodian.
What about emergency type things, if you have an administrator not there, what do we do in those situations?
They'll still call. Yeah. You know, if it's, if it's, you know, if they've got, if they think they've got a gas leak, they're going to call.
After they call, are we, are we still putting it in the system, so we got a way to track it, or is, are those, those things still outside the system?
Most of the time, they get put in the system, but I won't say 100% that much, but most of the time. If it's an emergency situation, you know, we still handle that as an emergency.
Emergencies to some people may not be emergencies.
Yeah, yeah. But, it's, but so far, it's working real well, and I think that we've been, everyone, I think's been well pleased with how it's actually, how it's going, and it's, it's been a good exit, it's been a good investment for our department.
Well, I think it's been really beneficial for our district as a whole, maintenance department. I do commend the maintenance men, they, I know there was some apprehension going from a paper-based system to electronic system, especially considering the familiarity with technology and iPads for some of our maintenance staff, but they really embraced it, and they worked with it, and it's been a really good process. The Smell process is much better. Obviously, faxes are outdated, I'd love to get to the point, we don't even have a fax system, and I mean, at some point in time, you gotta convert to a more efficient way, and faxes are outdated, in my opinion. As you mentioned, our maintenance staff is able to look at their devices, they know what jobs they've been assigned, what locations, and very few of our maintenance workers live right here in Rainesville, a lot of them live on the south end of North End. And of course, you know, instead of coming to Rainesville, we drive back to Idar. You know, if you start at Idar, you've got 40 more days of efficient work day that you've got, instead of that windshield time. So, that is, that's, that's pretty good. The principal understanding the status and knowing where it is, just knowing where you are on that continuum of getting that job completed is very important. Knowing that somebody has seen it, received it, they've ordered a part, means a lot, and that autonomy of being able to insert those jobs is really important. So, I think it's been real beneficial. I think, I had one principal say, "You know, I like that dude." And at first, I thought he was talking about somebody, and I was like, "Oh, I don't know what you're talking about." But then, knowing the individual, I figured, "Yeah, I know him." Now, now, I'm UK with you, so I'm glad we're liking that dude, so I'm excited, I appreciate it.
Anybody else have any question? Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, LeanFrog.
We got Mr. Brandon Payne with us here from LeanFrog. We talked with the board and the general population a little bit about the need for strategic planning. LeanFrog has provided that service for many different, different school districts and systems, and so he's going to speak to us here, he's got a little presentation, I think we're going to have to move around where we can see it, but we're going, board members, we're going to step around here where we can hear the power.
Dr. Barnett, thank you so much for inviting us to come tonight. I'm glad to be here with you and your board and your community. As he said, LeanFrog has been in existence, and you can go ahead and go to the next slide, we'll talk about it in just a minute, so you know who we are. Founded in 2009, our corporate office is in Huntsville, we have a regional office in Mobile, and then currently around 19 employees in that regard. You can see some of their certifications and those things. I myself come from education, I was in Coleman County Schools for over 20 years, left there as an interim superintendent, had been assistant before that, and that's where I actually became knowledgeable at LeanFrog, was actually in a strategic plan, that I was a facilitator internally with them, when they led ours. And so, that's the process, and that's where we go from there. So, I do want to talk to you just a moment about our L-Step. So, if we go to the next slide of that one, a little bit about what we did there, again, these are the variety of things that we do, and we have different people who fulfill these roles of our company, but the next one will start the L-Step thing for me, and what we do there. So, when a school district chooses to embark on a new strategic plan, you know, there's a lot of things that come into that, and there's a lot of ways that people go about doing those, and there's a variety of those. Ours is based in the Malcolm Baldrick criteria, which is well-known in the education world, it's also well-known in the quality improvement area of the world, and those things, and how that works. And so, it provides that big picture of where you're going. The major focus that we deploy in our use of it, when we facilitate for a school district, is a stakeholder-driven one. We want to make sure that we have captured what it is that your communities that make up your entire district want, for the district over the next five years, so that everything, everybody gets a voice, everybody gets a capture opportunity to speak in that. And we do that through a multiple variety of ways. It's not just singular what we do there, some of it's by survey, some of it's by focus groups, there's a variety of things that we do in that, even targeting down to making sure that we're asking students some questions, so they, we get their, their voice as well, along with parents, community members, business educators, teachers, you know, we want to make sure we get everybody involved as we move forward in that. So, on our next slide, we've got the approaches for promoting that continuous engagement of your team. That's really where our part in this comes in, is that background knowledge that we have after doing this in multiple school districts. We completed about four last year for school districts, we averaged that number somewhere between three and five a year that we do. Normally, we don't do them very quickly, and so, and there's a whole purpose behind why you don't do that. You don't want to run so fast that you outrun what your community really wants to have and best interest in it. And so, you know, typical time range for us is four to six months, and you'll see that shortly. But, to do that, we want to make sure that we have that consistent creation of value, that we're always moving forward in that, bringing people's information in, then having your strategic team. But, what we do is we set up a team of 12, that are the facilitators internally across the district of that, so that we're ensuring that we're capturing everybody's voice, but these are our driving people, and those are all people that will be a part of DeKalb County Schools, working in that team. And so, we facilitate the meetings, though, we do all the data analysis for you, bringing that back to that team of 12, providing those reports, giving the outcomes, making all of the comparisons, both to regional school districts, to national school districts, and to any opposing or supporting forces that you find in the education world, in relevance to what's going on. I mean, so in that, you're talking about federal funding, we're talking about state funding, we're talking about allocations, we're talking about direction, you know, how much emphasis do you put on steam going forward, how much emphasis do you put on traditional versus virtual, or blended, or, you know, what is it that your community wants to put in that, in that next five-year plan? We look at identified improvement opportunities, where in there can you make those significant improvements in DeKalb County Schools, that you can note in your strategic plan, so that you have a chance now to track against those, and that's where the KPIs come in there. One of the biggest parts about that is a lot of school systems, a lot of peoples, corporations, whatever, you know, they'll have a vision and a mission, they'll have some objectives, but they have no clear path on how they're going to get there. It's not clearly defined in a way that you can measure that, and that's one of the things that we do in our strategic plan, is build those KPIs, so that you know exactly the action steps that will be taken to achieve the goals that you set. So, whatever those objectives are, there's a clear path to get you there. And then ensuring maximum team engagement, that's one of the biggest things that you have, is, you know, everybody that serves on this team, whether it's a board member, a community member, a superintendent, teachers, you know, principals, parents, students, whoever it is, they all have other things that they have to do, that they're responsible for, they have their day-to-day in that. So, that's where the advantage of using LeanFrog to facilitate is, so that all of these things that have to happen behind the scenes are taking place, and then your team is making informed decisions. So, our next slide, talks about preparing to meet the needs of those students five to 10 years from now. We've developed five-year strategic plans, but obviously, sometimes they're going to have an impact as far out as 10 years, based on what you build and how you achieve those objectives. Prioritizing the future resource allocation and spending, you know, that's looking deeply into what you're currently spending your resources on, and then how you would move those to meet the objectives that you set, you know, maybe, or to sustain what you're already doing. You know, there will be things you would find in a strategic plan process that are absolutely excellent in DeKalb County Schools, and you wouldn't want to change those, but you want to make sure that you have an objective that will allow you to sustain it. And so, that's a big component of that one. Preparing for future challenges and opportunities, you know, and that's true that we have sometimes in the forces against education, whether that's in funding, resources, you know, industries moving in or out into the county area, you know, those things that could impact, and you can see those things coming sometimes, sometimes you can't, but you can make absolute preparations about how you will deal with them when they do. Obviously, one of the things that you get out of a strategic plan is increasing public confidence, being very transparent in your process, bringing this back. We work with your team to facilitate it, and then we also will work with your team to bring it to the board, to share it with everybody, to give updates as we go if requested, but certainly to get the plan approved at the end of that, so that there's a plan that everybody in the community knows, and this is what you got. We share the data, you know, we're very transparent in how we do that. Increase that value delivered to the students, employees, and community. Our plan has been proven in multiple districts. When you come up for advanced accreditation the next time around, here in DeKalb County, if they see that you've conducted L-Step with LeanFrog, our feedback from previous clients has always been, they just check that part off and move on. They don't ever worry about it, because they understand, and we, you know, where they would normally come in, and they would want to see your community stakeholder surveys and those other evidence facts, they know they're there, because they've been reviewed them, and we've done it in other communities with other school districts, so they know that. So, it always helps with that part of it, and then providing that long-term stability. This is a quick overview graphic of how we go through the process, kind of outlining the six months. We can accelerate or decelerate, we've had some districts that wanted to do one, but they, they really wanted it to take eight months, and there was a reason why, they had that, there were some things going on for them. We've had some that really needed it done in four, that's really pushing, if you want a quality outcome, and in four months is the absolute minimum that you can really get by and do that. But, if you look at what we looked through here as we go through our L-Step, in month one, we're going to determine the team members, we're going to conduct environmental scans and design stakeholder surveys. And so, to do that, we're going to look at what are the environmental factors around DeKalb County Schools, what are those around the state of Alabama, they're going to impact all here, and then also anything that would come regionally or from federal government's side of that. And then the design stakeholder surveys is the critical piece, because that's the first point where we touch all of your stakeholders. We use some mathematical formulas, I will get into those, but we use those to ensure that based on your population, your student enrollment, and those things, that we're getting a confidence level of at least 95%, that we know accurately that we've, that we've gauged what is your community wants. But, we don't have to touch everybody, but there's a certain number that will absolutely guarantee that for us and for you. Then we're going to, in month two, three, and four, we're going to conduct district-level performance review, review the results, and do the analysis, identify stakeholder requirements and expectations coming out of that, conduct the SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, working with your team to do that, providing that report back out, developing some strategies, coming out of the SWOTS and that, based on the stakeholder input. Then we develop strategy map and define the ballot scorecard. That's where we're setting up those key performance indicators, where it's not just simply, you know, that over the next five years, DeKalb County Schools will do this, it is they will do this, and here's how they'll do this, and this is why we're going to do this, and this is the what of what we're going to do. And so, it's, it goes into that depth level where we build that for you, and then submitting that final plan for steering committee and board approval, we come back on that again to make sure we have that, then when the committee is good with it, we bring it back to Dr. Barnett, and to the board, then to get approved for that, so that you have something that is concrete, your community can see, and you're very transparent in what you're looking to do in the next five years. And throughout this thing, we stay very closely aligned to the team that you have, to the superintendent, and then we provide reports back to the board as asked, you know, some boards have asked us to do that as we go through each step, some want it, you know, only toward the end, or they just want it in paper copy, so, you know, we facilitate that however the district chooses. And then one of the other things we can do, is if, once we've done surveys and those things, and we've got there, if there's a need in the scene, we can do those external focus groups, where we actually go out, we've done this in a couple of districts, where after we were to a certain point, they really wanted deeper feedback and deeper knowledge, and so, they asked us to come back and run community-based focus groups. So, we would go out to, you know, a feeder pattern school, to the high school, and have everybody come in, and that wanted to, that wanted to come and show up and give their thoughts, or further information, or clarification. So, that's a little bit about how we walk through that. As I said, we've completed three or four last year, we averaged somewhere between three and five a year, that's kind of what we can do. We've got a very, very, very good person who leads this workforce, Mary Markwork, she comes highly recommended, we can provide references, Dr. Barnett, if you need some of those, again, I know I've shared some with you. Are there any questions?
One thing that I'll say about LeanFrog is the founder of LeanFrog is from Section Alabama. So, he's a born and raised here on San Mountain, and in our time, I think he, in conversation, he feels that he's invested in our area here, and then he is local, and so I think that is something I found pretty interesting. I didn't realize when the first visit, he was from Section Alabama, and grew up, and then Stone Grove School there, so I found that to be pretty, pretty interesting as well.
On my drive over, he calls and says, "Hey, you're about to pass my folks' house." So, he, he knew about where I would be, so that's why he was calling and all that, and so. So, thank you so much, Dr. Barnett, I'm glad to be here with you, I hope that we can work with you and partner up and help you to build a strategic plan for the next several years of DeKalb County Schools.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank Mr. Payne for coming out and being with us tonight and presenting. Do you guys have any questions for me about that process? I know we've talked about.
There's a timeline, I mean.
Well, you know, advanced head, we're going through that, as we talked about ad nauseam here, we have been working toward a district accreditation. We are currently, each individual school is going through their accreditation, we're working to do that district-wide, we're well into that process. We do hope to have a, an onsite review next January or February, I don't have that date nailed down, but we do hope to do that. As one of the slides outlined, a strategic plan is something that they do encourage and do look for. Obviously, there's many ways that you can do that, but, but they do have a tried and true process that they've done and been successful, and so, I wanted to bring that to you guys' attention tonight, and let you learn a little bit more about it, review it over the next little time. And I think we still have, you know, some time to do it, but, but that being said, we need to move towards something, whether it be this or another model.
And I think something we've talked about over the last few years, and something to look forward to, we really need. Good, okay. Raylene Construction, I think we're just going to say that, and probably walk back out here and let the screen back down, so we've got another presentation.
Yes, we've got Mr. Jay Grubbs and Mr. TJ Maloney, who are here with Raylene Construction Management Firm, and they're going to be presenting, so we're going to come back around so we can see.
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Barnett and the board for allowing us to come tonight to speak to this work session. Appreciate y'all getting a little exercise in, getting up and down for us tonight. I don't know if that's typical for a work session, but I really appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Jay Grubbs, TJ Maloney's with me, he does our marketing for our company. The team that's here is myself, who operates the Alabama Division, Kirk Guyvey, he's Director of Preconstruction, Operates Your Education Division. Kirk couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted you to visually have a picture of who he was and what he does. Next slide, please. What we do and who we are, we're a family-owned and operated business founded in 1972. We were founded in Carrollton, Georgia. I've been with the company since 2002, it's the only company I've ever worked at. Born and raised in Hefflin, Alabama, lived in Cleveland County my entire life. We opened an Oxford office, two and a half, going on three years ago, and have been doing projects all over east, central, and northeast Alabama, predominantly closest to you guys being Cherokee County, Alabama, when we started as their CEM. We've also had several projects right across the line, that you may be noteworthy, St. Louis County High School in Somerville, as well as Coussa High School over in Floyd County, those are all projects that we manage. Cherokee County, Cleveland County, Clay County, Jackson City Schools, we all call those customers to us in the east-central Alabama area. We've got over 155 years of experience out of our executive team in educational construction management. Next slide, please. Just some numbers, some statistics for us, on what, just in the last 10 years of what our company has done as far as educational projects, is 134 total projects, almost a billion dollars in school construction, and that is in Alabama as well as Georgia, those are the two states combined. 86 educational facility projects, 41 active campus projects, and what an active campus project, for the ones of you that don't understand what that is, that's when you were trying to renovate a project or replace a school on an occupied existing campus with faculty and students onsite. It always makes for an interesting situation where safety is number one. So, we really want to point that out, that the active campuses is one of our specialties. Cherokee County, both of the projects we're doing in Cherokee County were active campuses. And, really, the last bullet here, why we would be here talking to you guys about construction management, and why it's important, because the return on investment that we try to bring to owners when we're involved is a 5% to 10% return, for what you invest to have us as part of the team. Next slide, please. Just to kind of point to this slide, design, bid, build, which is a hard bid situation, where you have an architect that you hire, they design the plans, then you bid out the project. And a lot of times, you have budget overruns, scheduling overruns, the quality sometimes can lack, so you have several different issues in that scenario. And with this picture here, the dingy boat here, we kind of joke with as the original contract, with the yacht being the change order, for them making up the dollars that they spend, that they didn't have in their bid to begin with. So, it can be a problem, and that doesn't matter if you're building a house or a school. I mean, that, anybody that's done any construction hopefully realizes what I'm talking about. Next slide, please. All right, so how can construction management help DeKalb County Schools?
Board members.
Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, last week, I was a little wishy-washy about that extra two days. But come last week, I loved it. So, I haven't heard, I'm sure there's negative somewhere. But I, I've heard positive from everybody that we enjoyed that break on the spring. I want those today. We may be calling you back. Uh, what, that felt, we, I guess, uh, just to give you feedback, we felt like we had a break. It's, it's more of the, I guess.
Yeah, I've had a lot of positive comments about it.
I, I was, I was, I was kinda anti that at first, cause you know, it's always been this way. Why are we changing it? But when last week rolled around, I was excited about it. So, wanted to give you some good feedback on the, on the calendar. And that's all that I have.
Appreciate that. I had a lot of good things to say. About your comments as well.
Good. Excellent. That is, okay.
That's everyone.
Smear each other best, bud.
Thank you for the opportunity and your dedication. It was so funny in our school, because we had people saying, we've got to go Monday and Tuesday and we'll be out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I said, you better look at your calendar. It's always been like this. Well, you better start looking at your calendar. The one that was, you know, gruffing the most about it comes back with a calendar and says, do you mean to tell me all these days or we all really? And I said, yes. So, Monday, same person came out there and said, oh man, this is wonderful. Can y'all get the calendar set like this every year?
Well, so we was gonna do it last year and there was, there was some complaints about doing it last year, but it's changed it.
I think we kinda get set in our way. And we think, you know, well, this is gonna be a drastic, drastic change and we don't want it, but our times are changing drastically.
There, there's two things people hate. The way things are and change.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
This has all been positive.
Any thinking? Okay. All right, appreciate y'all being here. We'll take a couple minute break and get ready for the reg or meeting at five. He finished his on that sharp. He wouldn't leave us in his lead, so if you would like to stand. Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you, Lord, for this wonderful day. Lord, thank you for your many blessings, Lord. Just want to ask you, Lord, to just, or give us the guidance, give us the wisdom we need, Lord, as we lead. And Father, we just ask you, Lord, to just be with each and every exclusive, uh, that's within this system. Or just be with them, watch over, take care of them. Thank you again for your many blessings, Lord. Thank you for your grace and mercy. In Jesus' name we pray.
Hallelujah. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you for being here. I will hit the call meeting to order at this time. Then when you have a, uh, copy of the agenda in front of you, uh, we'll have a chance to look that over. We need to get that, the motion second, get that approved. One thing we'd, we'd like to rearrange years. We'd like to move our early graduates up a couple slots, so we can go ahead and get those approved and, and let them go and do what they need to do. But other than that, do you have any other questions or anything on the agenda we need to take care of?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the motion carries. Okay, you have, uh, the minutes. We had two prior board meetings, uh, on October twenty-sixth and also November seventeenth. Those minutes are included in your packet as well, and I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the motion carries. We also have a copy of the financial statements, also the bank rec and the bills and accounts that be paid, all those things that, uh, that we need to get taken care of from a financial standpoint, so I'll entertain a motion for that at this time.
Make the motion.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the motion carries. Okay, Dr. Barnett, let's move the early, the early graduates here and let's see what we got.
We've got several early graduates, uh, with us tonight. Uh, we're going to vote to approve their early graduation if you so choose. Uh, they have worked diligently through their academic plan and shown themselves worthy to, uh, complete their academic, their high school academic track early for, uh, and go on to college or career or whatever that may be. They have to present a packet, uh, showing that they have a plan for what they want to do, so I'm gonna go through these and I ask, uh, that as we call your name, if you are here, please stand. And if you'd like to share something about your, uh, future goals or aspirations, you're more than welcome to. I'm not gonna require it as you thought I was. But, uh, I, I, I certainly, I'm certainly optimistic and hopeful that at least one or two will take that, uh, take that opportunity, okay? So, figure it out. All right, here we go. Uh, I recommend, we accept, uh, the early graduates of Isaiah Ford at Collinsville High School, Claudia Medina, Collinsville High School, Kelly Garrett, Sylvania High School, uh, Jordan Garcia, Sylvania High School, Hannah Barum, Sylvania High School, Vida Ross, Sylvania High School, Christian Townsend, Sylvania High School. Christian, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I want to thank the board, uh, for the opportunity to graduate early. I want to thank Sylvania High School and all my teachers and all my classmates for helping me get through this road. Uh, I plan to, uh, go to the University of Alabama and I hope to be a doctor one day.
Christian, very proud of you and, uh, we're very excited what the future holds for you. Very exciting. All right, we'll move forward. I recommend, uh, Megan Grayo, Sylvania High School. Okay, uh, Courtney Ray, Sylvania High School, Furman Callejas, Geraldine High School, John Satan. Estefani, Estefanio Ruiz, Geraldine High School. Okay, they just won't say nothing. Uh, Dacia Hancock, Geraldine High School. Lexi Camper, Geraldine High School. Isabel Corona, Geraldine High School.
Come on Geraldine, say something, you're laying me down there.
Nancy Balcazar, Geraldine High School. Riley Farmer, Plainview High School. Cruz Carrasco, Plainview High School. Kayla Killian, Plainview High School. Jose Hernandez, Crossville High School. Maria Pedro, Crossville High School. William Watson, Crossville High School and Dakota May, Crossville High School. Once again, I recommend we accept the early graduation of these students.
Okay, if you've heard the recommendation, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Let's say, congratulate, congratulate these young men and women. I've known Christian a long time. He's a, he is a bright young gentleman with a good family. And I know all these graduates will do a good job as they look forward to it.
We're excited for you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, early graduates.
We'd like to see you. We did hope to see you after the state of high school graduation. We would walk across the stage as well, so we look forward to seeing that, then, the future.
Very good. Thank you, thank you for being here tonight as well. Looks like we have a special recognition.
We, we do have a recognition. We have an employee, uh, who later on, if you so choose, we will approve his retirement, uh, for tonight. Mr. Emory Mann has been the employee, uh, of the Cal County Board of Education for forty-five years. He served in public education as a teacher, uh, working in the technology department. Now, when you, you talk about forty-five years, uh, that is committing your life to education, to serving students, serving the school district, uh, and serving your community. I think that is just outstanding. Uh, he actually was tied, uh, with, uh, Ms. Judy Ayers for our longest-serving, uh, employee and, and both of them, we, uh, are, are really showing a lot of dedication. So, we, we do want to honor Emory and we do hope to have a time to honor him. Later on, of course, we'll invite you all to celebrate that as well. Uh, but we do want to recognize him. It is not very often you have somebody who serves forty-five years. We want to recognize them.
That's a, that's a great job.
Hey, Joe Chandler, she got a D P.
All right, let's stay on topic. We have a, uh, we have a, uh, discipline hearing that we need to handle, so I need a, uh, motion, a second, for us to go and executive session. Discipline on Mr. Richardson. No, he's not a student. Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back, uh, in about ten minutes.
With services as determined by the school team, otherwise known as a long-term removal.
Okay. Heard superintendent's recommendation, let's take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, let's move on to item number six, bids.
Jim, we have a paper bid. Uh, we took bids and low bid was Strickland Companies, uh, twenty-one dollars and fifty-four cents per case. I recommend we approve that bid.
Okay. Heard recommendation, zero motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the motion carries.
Over the last several months, we've been working on the, uh, bus communication radio system. Uh, we took in bids, uh, we, the low bid was Falcon Community Services at ninety-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. I recommend we approve that bid, uh, and begin installing those, uh, radios.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
There a second? I'll second. Any discussion?
How many, how many would that be, I guess, for all of them?
Hundred forty-four. Hundred forty-one.
With this wall. We have their communication. We've been talking about bidding something for a while.
It's a hundred forty-four radios. It's a fifty watt radio. Uh, it has, uh, all kinds of capability, digital capabilities as well as, as analog. Uh, allow us to communicate with the, uh, uh, E M A. If for some reason there is a emergency and we believe communication otherwise, uh, Mr. Ashley and his team have kind of tested this system out in, in the, the very most rural areas of, of the Cal County Deerhead Cove and all points in between north-south. We believe that it's gonna allow us an opportunity to, uh, communicate more effectively, more efficiently. We're gonna be able to send out, uh, you know, if Mr. Ashley needs to send out to an entire school or, or every fleet all at once, he can do so. Or also an individual as needed. Uh, bus drivers are not allowed to, you know, use their phone while they're driving, but this will be able to get, you know, an auditory message as needed if there, if there is a need to. Uh, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna allow us to discontinue our, you know, our cellular usage for each one of those, um, uh, buses. So, I think it's gonna be, uh, over time, very, you know, short term amount of time, it'll actually pay for itself and then there'll be a cost of this measure. So, I think it's almost a, uh, it's, it's a win-win from a lot of different, uh, standpoints.
I appreciate Mr. Ashley and, uh, E M A for working all that together and getting that project, uh...
Mr. Ashley, do you have, do you have anything to add?
I'd like to thank, uh, the E M A. We're actually making use of the super tower and the equipment that's already in place that the E M A uses. Uh, they've generously offered to allow us, uh, a frequency, a digital frequency that they're not using and, uh, we will communicate on the digital side of the frequency. And with one push of the button, if, if need be, in case of a catastrophic event, we could go to analog and be able to talk to all the E M A officials, uh, our E M A access. If they needed to use our equipment to help evacuate a city, whatever that case may be. So, there's a lot of, uh, interoperability between the E M A and the school system. Uh, and the partnership has just been really, uh, good. I really appreciate that. So, uh, like Dr. Barnett said, there's a lot of win-win situations all the way around that.
Yeah, good things work, good, we'll work together.
Yeah.
Is this a total cost or will that be a...
That's total, that's total cost.
Is there yearly cost after that?
There, there's, there's no yearly fee, uh, because, uh, there, it's a standalone system and, um...
What's, what's the life of this system? Will they give an idea?
We, we can, uh, purchase an extended warranty for five years. Uh, the life is expected to be at least ten years, uh, of this equipment.
I think the, the return on our investment was what, four years?
Right.
Something like that, so after year four, we'll be, it'll be money in our bank, so to speak.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We got a couple on the job entries. We'll do those together.
Uh, I recommend we put the on-the-job entry for Mr. Rhonda Jones, C and B worker at Plainview that is for two days, and Ms. Campina, Special Ed Teacher at the Ider Special Service Center, and has for one day.
Okay, there's a recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have, uh, several resignations, uh, retirements. Do we want to take all of these together? You have anybody? Okay, we'll take them, these all together. Okay, do these all through.
I, I recommend, uh, we accept the retirement of Mr. Emory Mann, computer software hardware technician of the itinerant system. Uh, Ms. Morella Hodges, uh, retirement as a service teacher, half day at Hendrick Junior High and half day at Ider High School. I recommend we accept the retirement of Ms. Kathy Robertson, high school custodian, twelve month at Valley Head High School. I recommend we accept the retirement of Mr. Bill Monroe, high school principal at Valley Head, retirement. I recommend we accept the retirement of Ms. Angie Bowles, speech language pathologist at Plainview, itinerant Plainview High School. I recommend we accept the resignation of Ms. Maria Quintana, translator, transliterator, itinerant. The, I recommend we accept the resignation of Ms. Andrea Hastings, registered nurse at Moon Lake Elementary School. Recommend we accept the resignation of Ben C. Salise, elementary teacher at Collinsville High School. Recommend we accept the resignation of Mr. Lee Moore, math teacher at Collinsville High School. And I recommend we accept the resignation of Ms. Brittany DeBose, uh, speech language interpreter and transliterator, Icarus.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, superintendent, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Lot of, lot of experience.
Yeah. There's a lot of experience, a lot of good employees, uh, retiring, resigning for various reasons. We're gonna miss them. Uh, they'll, they'll, they'll be, any of them will be missed and difficult to replace.
How long has Mr. Monroe been there at Valley Head?
Uh, at Valley Head, uh, I'm, I'm really uncertain at Valley Head.
I've been wanting about his second term, I think, somewhere along the way. Several years. Been in the system a long time.
Yeah.
Good job. He was, he was one of my teachers, too, in Africa. A long time.
Well, we definitely will thank them for their service. They've, they've done a great job for us and, uh, meant a lot to, to us and to a lot of people, so they'll be missed, maybe, all of them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, leaves of absence, let's just take all those.
We recommend we accept the following leaves of absence. Lisa Murdoch, registered nurse at Geraldine. Danny Wilson, bus driver at Five, uh, Wayne Wilson. Becky Dean, pre-K auxiliary teacher at Plainview High School. Nicole Green, pre-K auxiliary teacher at Five High School. Heather Andrews, pre-K auxiliary teacher at Ider. Uh, Ms. Ashley Wood, Ashley Smith, elementary teacher at Ider High School. Uh, Mr. Ray Evans, maintenance worker at the facilities building. And, uh, Ms. Jennifer, she's speech language pathologist at Geraldine.
Okay, you've heard the recommendations of the superintendent, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Certified placements.
I recommend we place Ms. Taylor Chastain as general science teacher at Collinsville High School.
Okay. Heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second, any discussion?
I'm gonna note that is a lead from, uh, December the fourth through the end of the summer year.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend we place Ms. Laura Stevenson, elementary teacher at Geraldine on lead from December the seventh through February the fifth of eighteen.
Okay. Heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll have some support work.
I recommend we place Mr. David King, bus driver at Sylvania High School.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend we place Mr. Matt Hosh, computer hardware software technician at the facilities building.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? We're moving this one from, uh, contract, yes, off to this...
Heard a lot of, like, the bus, well, heard a lot of good things about them.
Matt does a very good job. He, he's diligent, he works hard, he's, he's intelligent, he's bright, he's got, got a lot of things going for him. He's gonna be, uh, he's been a, a real asset to us in, in his current role and so I'm, I'm proud that we're ready to get him on full-time.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the motion carries.
Recommend we place Mr. Tracy Holden as a Twenty-First Century Bus Driver at Collinsville, best actor school program.
Okay, heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I miss something? Okay, motion carries.
There was five, no, we're not.
All right. Y'all just jump right in. The longer you wait, the longer we're sitting here, so...
I recommend we place Ms. Denise Downer, itinerant special ed aide, paraprofessional at Plainview High School.
Okay, heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend we place, uh, Andrew Harrells, tech route, bus driver at Sylvania High School.
Okay. Heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend we place Ms. Brenna Williams as a bus driver on a lead. I recommend we pack that to, uh, November the s-, uh, get over the seventh and run that through, uh, five twenty-four, eighteen at Collinsville High School.
Okay, heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend we place Mr. Ron Dawkins as a bus driver at Collinsville High School.
Okay, heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the motion carries. We got a coaching supplement.
Coaching supplement, I recommend we, uh, provide a coaching supplement for Mr. Daniel Williams, who is a head girls softball coach at Collinsville High School.
Heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Volunteer coaches.
Volunteer.
Yes.
I recommend we put the volunteer coaches, uh, Mr. Chad Murdochs for softball at Sylvania High School, and Mr. Barrett Jones for basketball at Collinsville High School.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Transfers.
Recommend the, uh, following transfer, uh, Mr. Stan Reeves from bus driver at Rahama Junior High School to bus driver at Plainview High School.
You've heard the recommendation, superintendent, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Was this, Mr. Reeves, he been with us a long time, several years?
Mr. Reeves been an employee for us for seven or eight years, I believe.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We've got a couple of principal contracts that are coming up, we need to...
All right, uh, you have a couple of principal contracts there in front of you. The first one, I recommend we approve, uh, three-year contract for Mr. Jordan Phillips, uh, as a renewal at Rahama Junior High School.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Notice that we're changing these, that, that this is actually almost a three and a half year deal because we're extending it yet to the June thirty, so we have everybody in it on June thirty. You can't do it less than three years. You got, so we do a little more.
And I, I hope we're doing that one all up. I think that's good.
After the first of the year, uh, after we approve these two, there'll be one more principal contract that will not be aligned in such a manner. And so, we, we hope to, we'll present that contract for renewal in January, uh, so come after, you know, after the January meeting, all principal contracts will have...
Makes a, makes a lot of sense and I, I appreciate it. I appreciate when we, when we do some common sense stuff.
Right, it, it makes sense, you know, you don't want to take the principal out of the school during the middle of the year. And so, at the end of the year, that's the time to do such, uh, and so, we, we, that's gonna be a practice that we'll, we'll try to always, whether it be a, a renewal or a first-time contract, we're gonna make sure that we, uh, have expiration date there of that time.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I recommend we approve the, uh, principal contract, three-year contract for Mr. Phil Bryant at Crossville Elementary.
Okay, heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, contracts, I think we can do all of those as one group.
Okay. I recommend we approve the following contracts. Heather Bethune, under Homebound IDAB. Amanda Woodall, Homebound IDAB. Beverly Ledbetter, Homebound IDAB. Michaela Willingham, Homebound Local. Dr. Matic Glover, as an Independent Educational Evaluation from IDAB. The Learning Tree, Applied Behavioral Analysis under IDAB. Huntsville Hospital, Auditory and Verbal Therapist, Therapy Services for IDAB. Ms. Penny Benton, Benton, McKenna Bento Advocate for Title Ten Homeless. Kim Bradley Ford, Tutor under Title One. Kimberly Ford, ESL Tutor under Title Three. Robert Worthy, Twenty-First Century Collinsville Music Teacher. Steve Green, Title One After School Program, Henry Group Teacher, Title One. Carla Hamilton, Title One After School Program, Henry Group, Title One Lady. Sherry Bryant, Title One After School Program, Henry. Tabitha Greenwood, Title One After School Program, Henry. Jennifer Ridgeway, Title One After School Program, Henry. Amber Trailer, Title One After School Program, Henry. Margaret Brown, Clerical, Central Office Clerical at Local. Harold Wilford III, Maintenance Worker at Local. And Jase Urban, Computer Hardware Software Technician, Facilities.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's give that to Mr. Evans. There's a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, Mr. Superintendent, we've got a couple things under your comments or reports or recommendations.
I do. As you know, for the last several months, we've been working towards a energy, utility, and infrastructure efficiency program. We met with several folks, we put out a request for qualifications, and we had three individuals or vendors companies who returned those samples and provided such really wonderful packets. We have a couple here. As you can tell, we flagged a lot of things that we've required and found really interesting that were really, really positive. Both, both of these, there were three people who applied to minimum qualifications. So, it came down to these two. We did a thorough job, I believe, of examining the contents therein, crossing it with other individuals with different thoughts and expertises. We did a lot of background, calling folks who had partnered on different projects of different sizes, scopes within these partnerships. I believe, and I think all the individuals who went through this process with me would agree that we have a win-win situation here. And it was really, really challenging. I, I was lost, probably all lost a little bit of sleep over this process. But at the end of the day, we only have one, we can only go with one vendor. So, I recommend that we'll begin this energy, utility, and infrastructure efficiency program with Schneider later.
Okay, heard superintendent's recommendation, is there a?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion?
When we get started.
Well, I, I, every feedback I've got has been positive. You know, you've got your guaranteed savings that are going to get your expenditure. The guaranteed, the, the, the same actually achieved savings have exceeded pretty, pretty significant in most of the places I've spoken to. I talked to a lot of different folks and so I think it'll be good and I do plan to partner and work with them, you know, real soon to get, get this possible.
Excellent. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Purchasing cards.
Purchasing cards, we, we hoped to have them here earlier. That didn't happen. But they're here now. They came in Tuesday, I met the FedEx manager at the door. And so, got them. And Ms. Becky Klein, she's been working very diligently. Obviously, we did not want to slow anyone down from using their money. So, in the meantime, from October one up until now, they've been completing purchase orders as they have for the last few years to, to make sure they could go ahead and weren't doing without supplies. But now, she is going in that program and making sure that every teacher, whether, whatever their balance is on their teacher's supply money, she's loading that on their card. We have a principal's meeting here on Tuesday. Mr. Cooper, I want to thank him for his work on this. He's really stayed on top of it, done a really good job of pushing it through. So, I thank him and all of his staff. They've done a wonderful job down there. So, on Tuesday, our principal meeting, I anticipate giving those cards out to the principals with some directions and some information on how to begin using that. So, come, you know, Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday, they should be back at schools for the teachers to sign off on their receipt and understand, they understand, you know, how to use it. So, that's exciting. So, I know that's really good.
Correct.
In your package, you also have a Technology Coordinator Job Description. It's, it's back there in the back of your packet. This is something that we've not had necessarily entitled. And so, what we are doing is putting this job description on the table and I ask that we lay that on the table for thirty days for review and approval, okay, to prove it at some point in the future.
Okay, you've heard it. Okay, you're just, let's see. Yeah, I'm going to take a motion, a second later on the table. How long do you have to take a motion at this point?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, any discussion? We've had a chance to look at that, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. You guys have something to say.
Mary Joe, I, I, I was fortunate this year. I want to thank you for bringing it to our attention about working in, in the lunch rooms or on buses or various places like that during the month of November. I've still got a couple places that I wasn't able to fit into the month of November that I hope to do maybe the first week of December. But I had a really good time working with some of these fine folks, lunch room work.